Okay, we'll call this meeting to order. This Delaware County Commissioners Meeting, it's Monday, July 6th. Time is 9:01 a.m. Let's stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Steve, could you call the roll, please?
Ms. Rigan.
Present.
Mr. King.
Here.
Mr. Henry.
Here.
Mr. Brooke.
Here.
Thank you. Okay, we have a public hearing regarding the disposal of county-owned real property?
This is a public hearing on some properties that were, we identified in the last meeting with the resolution, which is later on in the meeting. This is an opportunity for the applicants to come in and make their request. They've all submitted their applications to us. We've received them. Trying to find out. The applicants are... It's in the resolution. These are, they've been requested by not-for-profit entities to develop them. I can't find the resolution right off the top of my head, so. Here it is. Ross Community Center. Energize ECI, Friends of Ross Community. I think those are...
Is that Resolution 2024?
2027.
They must not be here.
I think we'd indicated that because of limited seating, we would represent to the commissioners that we've received the applications. They meet the criteria. They're all not-for-profit, tax-exempt entities, and that it's our position that they satisfy the requirement. We were looking at there anybody that was going to oppose this transfer.
Okay, is there anyone here to speak about these properties? Is there anyone, is there anyone here in opposition?
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
We have a motion to close the public hearing in a second. Roll call, please.
Mr. King.
Yes.
Ms. Rigan.
Yes.
Mr. Henry.
Yes. Okay. Go to the approval of minutes, June 15th, 2020.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion to approve the minutes in a second. Roll call, please.
Ms. Rigan.
Upsting.
Mr. King.
Yes.
Mr. Henry.
Yes. Okay, next is presentations to the commissioners. Ms. Nitra Davis.
Is it okay for me to take my mask since I'm just here?
I'm sorry.
Is it okay for me to remove my mask so you can hear me better?
So we can hear you better?
Yes.
Yeah, pull, pull, pull the mic up a little bit, too.
Okay. Okay. My name is Nitra Davis. I'm with Muncie City Council, and I represent District 6. I don't necessarily have a presentation. I'm actually just coming to ask a few questions and get some clarity on some things. I do have some pictures and a list of properties I would like to give to you all. Is that okay?
Sure.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
So, when I took my position in January as Muncie City Council, District 6, a lot, I received a lot of information going door-to-door about lots that were vacant in the 6th District. One of my goals is to make sure that Industries, South Central, all the areas, you know, on the south side and that area, we want to do beautification. We kind of get a bad rap because of the way our area looks. And the most minimal thing that we can do to beautify our area is keep our grass cut. I know that you all take on a lot of properties, but I have a list of, I think there's about 25, and this is just an industry neighborhood, and they are not mowed. We didn't, I, so I'm, I'm coming here for resolve, not to complain, not to point the finger at anyone, just to see how we can come together and figure out a way to keep some of these properties cut. I have homeowners in that area. Some of them live next to these properties. They're willing to maintain them if there's a way that they could acquire them. So I'm looking for solutions. First, is there a grass-cutting maintenance plan for properties that you take on?
We have mowing contracts. Jenny can better explain that.
That list has grown exponentially this year as a result of the tax sales last year. Our tax sales were really, really successful, and there was roughly 115 between and 130 left over from the sale, and they had one buyer that came in and pretty much bought them all up. Joe Retsch is here. Those group of parcels had to go through a unique process, and temporarily they were put into the commissioner's name prior to being put into the new owner's name. That is now resolved, but that started last year and just got resolved within the last month or so. So there, all of those were, of course, when the building commissioner with the city would get complaints, he would go. We have really good line of communication with them. They would go out, run the parcel number, review the area. Todd Moore would call me, and I would send the people that I contracted with right out to take care of it. And so it, it's a weekly basis. He was calling me saying, I've got a new one to add to your list. So our list has grown a lot this year. But like I said, that situation just got resolved, so hopefully a lot of that gets better in this new owner. I don't need to go through under financials. So yeah, it was an unexpected scenario.
Okay, so someone, so these properties, I, I went around Thursday just on the pictures that I gave you, and there are only a few, but, so you're saying that possibly these are owned by other people?
They could be now in the new owner's name. If you want to give me the list, I would have all...
I did check the list that you had from your last meeting, and I, and I did verify the ones that you already gave over to Blight. None of these are on that list.
No, this would be, I, just let me see the list because it wouldn't necessarily reflect that list.
Okay, okay, I'll give you the list.
John's checking some of those now.
And one other question, some, some, I didn't do all of this research myself, and I have another list of properties, but it seems very difficult to find all the properties that you own. Is there a way that we can give a consistent name, like on Beacon? Like you have to, are there other properties and other names besides Delaware County Commissioners?
There, there are about five different names that, over the last 100 years, that they've used. Board of Commissioners, Delaware County, Delaware County Commissioners. It just depends on who the attorney was and who prepared the documents. We've been trying to be consistent since we've been here on the same name, but you, you have to look about five or six different types of names to know who, who owns a property in Delaware County. That's the problem.
Okay, okay.
We'll definitely get those mowed.
Okay, I really appreciate that.
Yeah, Jenny, Jenny will...
I'll cross-reference that with our list, and we'll get that to you.
One other question. Do you all have a side lot program or something similar? If a homeowner was willing to maintain the property, is there a way that they can fill out?
Yeah, that's an easy fix because in the past, we have looked up who, sent out some kind of notice.
We, from time to time, the auditor's office has sent out notices to adjacent property owners if they're interested in purchasing the, the lot from the county, and it's, they send it to all adjacent property owners. And there have been occasions where we've had to have a drawing, actually, because two of the property owners have had, made the same request for the same lot.
And when do they do, do they do that with every property or when somebody's notified? How do, who do?
Well, the auditor's office determines that. I think it's at least once a year they do that. They send out the notices on the properties that are up either for a tax sale or a deed sale. They send that notice out.
So let me, okay, when I go back to some of my neighbors who have requested some of these lots next to them, may I ask if they call the auditor's office? Is that the correct thing to do?
Yeah.
Okay. Well, that concludes anything, and I would love to work with you all. This is, this is nothing, I want us to work together and get things done. I'm, my goal is to help the 6th District be beautified.
Yeah.
You know, when you have a nice place to live, you know, it helps with some challenges. And that's what I want for the 6th District, okay?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
By the heaven here.
Okay, next, under contracts and agreements for approval, Department of Justice Grant, Judge Voorhees.
Good morning. Mary Ann Voorhees, presiding judge for Delaware Circuit Courts. I'm here for Emily Anderson. We are asking the county commissioners to approve our Department of Justice grant for $58,008 for PPE, and starting this year, ending next, in January 31, 2022. I think you have all the paperwork.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the grant request. Steve, could you call the roll, please?
Mr. King.
Yes.
Ms. Rigan.
Yes.
Mr. Henry.
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, next is NDOT, State Road 32 Highway Improvement Project.
This is a request that the commissioners received about a month ago from NDOT. They're going to be doing some paving and widening of State Road 32, and what they would like are the intersection points for the county building at 32 or Bain Street and High Street and Main Street and Walnut Street. They're going to improve the handicap access on those particular corners, so they need to acquire those to be able to do that.
I believe they're giving us $1,000.
Yes. It's .14, we got 1,4 acres, I think, all total.
I approve, I make a motion, we approve this.
Second.
32.
We have a motion to approve the request from NDOT in a second. Roll call, please.
Mr. King.
Yes.
Ms. Rigan.
Yes.
Mr. Henry.
Yes. Indiana State opioid, opioid response grant, Jane Miranda.
Good morning, Jane Miranda with Community Corrections. I am seeking your approval to do an online submission for the, this would make the third year we've done this grant. This is for 2022, and we are in partnership with adult probation for this one. It will pay for two pre-trial kiosks for low-risk offenders and pre-trial offenders to check in on instead of seeing a probation officer, and then it will pay for our case manager at Community Corrections that does the assessments every day in the jail on those arrested, and she also teaches our intensive outpatient education class at Community Corrections.
Where are the kiosks located?
They will be located, there will be one in the Justice Center when the new Justice Center is built, and then there will be another one throughout the community to make it easier for people to come in and check. So it's more geared towards the pre-trial offenders that have not been adjudicated so that they don't have to physically come in somewhere.
Does it have to be open like 24/7 or?
That they're working on. I'm not quite for sure whether, where they will put them.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion to approve this grant request in a second. Roll call, please.
Ms. Rigan.
Yes.
Mr. King.
Yes.
Mr. Henry.
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is interlocal agreement with Town of Yorktown.
This is an interlocal agreement with the Town of Yorktown on a joint redevelopment project. It's, coincides with Resolution Number 2026 to work with Yorktown on some redevelopment projects.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
A motion to approve interlocal agreement with Yorktown in a second. Roll call, please.
Mr. King.
Yes.
Ms. Rigan.
Yes.
Mr. Henry.
Yes. Next is understanding or responding to implicit bias and microaggression.
Yes, this is a Shepherd Leadership Academy program. This was brought to my attention, I brought it to your attention, from the Emily at the courts about doing some training for the county employees, the county staff. I looked at the curriculum. We had a conversation with Mr. Isaacs and, and the instructor. It's a very good program, and it's something that is very timely, and I believe that it's appropriate for the commissioners. I would also suggest that the commissioners ask the other elected officials to have their staff also join in this. We've got it up for three sessions. One would be at the Highway Department for the Highway Department crew, but since the number of your employees are really very limited, the majority of employees work for the other elected officials, we can get this out to the other elected officials for them to work on scheduling and training when they all can join. I think they've had up to 300 people on the Zoom, it's a Zoom platform, so I don't think we'll have an issue with that.
So I think commissioners, we've, we've all talked about this. We think this is important at this point, and we do, even though we have limited control over some of the other elected officials and their employees, we would strongly and highly recommend that you mandate that your employees go through this training. The commissioners are paying for this, for everyone to go through, and we highly recommend this.
All right, Jessica, Mr. Isaac, I got one question for you. I would like for my police department to go through this. If we paid the 1,250, could we go right along with the county?
Yes, you can.
And have my officers join in on the Zoom?
Yes, you can.
Okay. I'll get with you in person next week. Would that be all right?
Sure. One thing I would add that might be a note, part of your agreement, if you choose to complete this with us, half of the proceeds will go to a social justice organization of your choice, and so that's, our instructor is donating her part, not only her time, but her portion of the proceeds. So Dr. Messinio, you know, made that arrangement. So you all get to choose, there's a list there of a couple of different local social justice organizations where you want half the proceeds donated.
Okay, thank you.
Yes. I, they're all good organizations, but I would like to support the Motivator Minds. It's so important that we get these children to learn how to read, and so I'll make that a motion with my recommendation.
So you're...
We do the leadership training.
Okay, you're making the motion to approve the contract with the training proposal and also to donate our portion of the program cost to Motivator Minds?
Yes, sir.
James, you made the second, correct?
Yes.
Steve, could you call the roll, please?
Mr. King.
Yes.
Ms. Rigan.
Yes.
Mr. Henry.
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Isaacs and John, for getting this all together. Emergency Declaration 2020-13, John?
Yeah, this was a declaration that I prepared. It falls in line with the governor's back-on-track 4.5. The governor had step five was supposed to start on July 5th, but because of continuing trepidation, I think he extended the health emergency for the COVID on, until August 3rd, and this also sets forth the, those basic standards and incorporates his executive orders 2030, 20-32 through 20-35 for slowing some of the response back and slowing some of the things back. It requires that when employees are interacting with others and in, in the building, then they have to wear face masks, and it still continues the limited occupancy and, and maintain social distancing, so.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion to approve the emergency declaration in a second. Roll call, please.
Ms. Rigan.
Yes.
Mr. King.
Yes.
Mr. Henry.
Yes. I, I would like to say, too, we also recommend that while you're out in the community, continue to wear face masks. Again, that's a recommendation at this point, so please, please continue to do so if you can. Okay, ordinance 2020-007, an ordinance admitting Title IV, Chapter 1 of the Delaware County Code regarding the Building Code Ordinance. Marta?
Yes, Marta Moody with the Plan Commission Office, which includes the Building Commissioner Department, and this is, just as, as I explained at the last meeting, an amendment to the Building Code Ordinance, rather than listing each code, like each plumbing code, electrical code, building code separately, and they constantly change, it is proposing to adopt the state codes by reference so that as the state updates their codes, that Delaware County automatically has adopted their codes by virtue of this amendment.
Little housekeeping or big housekeeping.
Yeah.
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 I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion to adopt ordinance 2020-07, 007, in a second. Roll call, please.
Mr. King.
Yes.
Ms. Rigan.
Yes.
Mr. Henry.
Yes. All right, next is ordinance number 2020-008, an ordinance to change the monthly fund contributions from EMS billing. John?
Yeah, this is a, an ordinance that was requested originally by Jason when he was here, and Mike has continued it on for a change in some of the fund amounts. When the EMS ordinance was adopted in 2017, I think it was, or revised in 2017, there were certain amounts that were identified and specified in various funds that they have, hazmat, training, medical equipment, that sort of stuff, that had set amounts in there, and since that was set amounts by ordinance, they need to be amended by ordinance. So I worked with Mike to, to get these reduced, to help return money back to the County General Fund, as well as reflect the, the run volume that Delaware County EMS is having now. So the amounts that we have are all been approved by EMS, and they're in there for EMS approval, for your approval.
Mike, do you have anything to add?
No, we just felt like this was important to kind of come in line with the changes that are taking place now, so, and to give some of that money back off the top.
Can I say something?
Yes.
And he doesn't know this because I just got this this morning, that's why I'm here. If you don't change this ordinance, we lost another $50,000 that we're getting tomorrow. County General get $4,000 versus last month, we got $48,000. The, the month before that, we got $66,000, which was way down, but our total collections in May was 131,000. In June, it dropped to 111,000, and tomorrow we get 67,000.
Okay.
So we're really hurting.
I'll make a motion that we introduce ordinance 2020-008.
Second.
We have a motion to introduce the ordinance in a second. Roll call, please.
Ms. Rigan.
Yes.
Mr. King.
Yes.
Mr. Henry.
Yes.
I'll also make a motion to suspend the rules on ordinance number 2020-008.
Second.
I would agree with that. We have a, a motion in a second to suspend the rules. Roll call, please.
Mr. King.
Yes.
Ms. Rigan.
Yes.
Mr. Henry.
Yes.
Also make a motion that we accept ordinance number 2020-008.
Second.
We have a motion to adopt ordinance 2020-008 in a second. Roll call, please.
Ms. Rigan.
Yes.
Mr. King.
Yes.
Mr. Henry.
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Donna.
Okay, Resolution 2020-022 regarding the amendment of the Daleville Redevelopment Area.
Good morning, Commissioners. Brad Bookout with Delaware County Economic Development. This is the final step for this process. This has previously been approved unanimously by the Delaware County Redevelopment Commission, the Economic Development Commission, the Plan Commission, and the Town of Daleville. Notably also, we did have a public hearing with the Delaware County Redevelopment Commission. There were no comments written or verbal received. I appreciate your support today. This will conclude the, this will conclude this long process to amend the Daleville Redevelopment Area.
It's a pleasure, the Commissioners.
And this is just stretching the area a little bit?
No, this is specifically is allowing for the BHI project, the Forza project, and the Town Hall project to all move forward, be included in the redevelopment plan for the town.
I'll make a motion we accept Resolution Number 2020-022.
Second.
We have a motion for approval, Resolution Number 2020-022, in a second. Roll call, please.
Mr. King.
Yes.
Ms. Rigan.
Yes.
Mr. Henry.
Yes.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you, Mr. Bookout. Next is Resolution Number 2020-023, Resolution of Board of Commissioners of Delaware County, Indiana, rescinding Board of Commissioners Resolution Number 2017-019.
This, back in 2017, a request was made of the, by the, of the commissioners by the Sanitary District to have a property swap, some property that you have on West Washington with some property on East Washington that the Sanitary District never could finalize and never could confirm the swap. This is one that they requested. So to clean up the title, make sure that there are no title issues, it was our decision that we recommend that the commissioners rescind ordinance 2017-09 so that the property's never changed hands, it never even got closed to being closed. The Sanitary District couldn't confirm that, and they couldn't, couldn't complete the swap, so just resolving this, rescinding this resolution cleans up whatever potential title issues may exist.
I'll make a motion we rescind Resolution Number 2017-019.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion to rescind 2017-019 with Resolution 2020-023. Roll call, please.
Ms. Rigan.
Yes.
Mr. King.
Yes.
Mr. Henry.
Yes. Next is Resolution Number 2020-024, Resolution Delaware County Board of Commissioners Approving Sale of County-Owned Real Properties Using Services Provided by SRI.
This is a resolution for the upcoming, I believe this is the upcoming, yes, deed sale to be held on July 28th. There's a list of properties of Exhibit A which are, have all been through a couple different tax sales, and now the deeds have been granted to the county for sale to the, to the highest bidder at the deed sale in July 28th. This is the same thing that we did, the county did last year in 2019, and I think the county disposed of 300 and some odd parcels, and the county got some property out of it. That's what Ms. Davis was talking about, but we've been able to dispose of most of those and put them back on, most of them have been put back on the tax rolls.
John, could you compare this list with Mrs. Davis's list? And if there is an address on there that are the same, let's contact her.
Yep, I will.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution Number 2020-024.
Second.
We have a motion to approve Resolution 2020-024, in a second. Roll call, please.
Mr. King.
Yes.
Ms. Rigan.
Yes.
Mr. Henry.
Yes. Next is Resolution Number 2020-025, Resolution of the Delaware County Board of Commissioners, Transfer County-Owned Real Property to the City of Muncie.
Yes, this is a resolution that was drafted in response to the request the Commissioners made and the agreement with the Muncie Redevelopment Commission to transfer certain properties. The city would transfer property to 3100 South Tillison that it has, and the county would transfer properties on East, East Washington, West Washington. would transfer properties on East, East Washington, West Washington, Franklin, and 1605 East Main. Just to approve and to accept the, the transfer that was requested.
Make a motion we accept resolution number 2020-025.
Second.
We have a motion to approve resolution 2020-025, and a second roll call, please.
Ms. Reagan.
Yes.
Mr. King.
Yes.
Mr. Henry.
Yes. Next is resolution number 2020-026, Resolution Approving Interlocal Agreement, Jointly Undertaking Economic Development Project Within the Town of Yorktown.
You already, you already approved the interlocal agreement, so this is just the formal step of approving the interlocal agreement, adopting this resolution.
Make a motion to approve resolution 2020-026.
Second.
We have a motion to approve the resolution, and a second roll call, please.
Mr. King.
Yes.
Ms. Reagan.
Yes.
Mr. Henry.
Yes. Resolution number 2020-027, Resolution Delaware County, Indiana Board of Commissioners Making a Final Termination on Transfer of Certain Properties to Nonprofit Entities.
This is a resolution to approve the transfer of properties to the not-for-profit entities that were subject to the public hearing earlier in the meeting, requested by these not-for-profits, Ross Community Center and Energize ECI. As I said, both of them are both tact-exempt entities, which is the first standard. Second standard is they intend on developing those properties for their, for their own tact-exempt use.
I did find the other nonprofit, Muncie Home.
Yes, there you go. I knew there was another one.
I move that we adopt 2020-27.
I'll second it.
We have a motion to approve the resolution, and a second roll call, please.
Mr. King.
Yes.
Ms. Reagan.
Yes.
Mr. Henry.
Yes. Next is resolution 2020-028, Resolution Approving Interlocal Agreement with the Town of Albany, Indiana and Albany Emergency Medical Service, jointly accept assets and transfer property.
This is a resolution to, the Delaware County EMS has been operating out at the Albany EMS for about a year now. All the Albany EMS has made a decision that they want to disband. They have certain assets which have already been transferred, some of them have been transferred over to Delaware County, and the rest of them will be transferred over to Delaware County. There is, they have three or five lots out there in Albany, which they own, subject to a reversionary interest by the Town of Albany. The reversionary interest is Albany EMS can operate and, and own this land as long as they operate a volunteer EMS organization. And if they don't operate a volunteer EMS operation, then it goes back to the Town of Albany. The Delaware County wants to operate and use that as a, as a EMS station, but unfortunately, we don't operate on as a volunteer organization. So Albany needs to change that reversionary interest so that it's transferred over to Delaware County. There have been discussions with the town board. They're on, they're on board with it. The Commissioners and EMS service think it's, it's a good place to have an EMS station, as long as they can afford to do that, and that they will, they already have the assets transferred over, so the Albany EMS can dissolve the corporation.
Shannon, how long has the EMS Albany been up there?
Oh, I don't.
And you were probably in high school.
Yeah, I was up there for 10 years, and it was probably 20, 30 years before that. I don't, I don't know. It's been a long time.
And we do want to thank those volunteers that started it, and this is a win-win for us, and we appreciate all their effort. I move we adopt 2020-28.
Second.
We have a motion to approve resolution 2020-028, a second roll call, please.
Mr. King.
Yes.
Ms. Reagan.
Yes.
Mr. Henry.
Yes. Okay, any department heads or elected officials wish to speak? Okay.
Sorry about that. I was out in the hallway.
That's fine.
Molly Hunt, Purdue Extension, County Extension Director. I just wanted to provide an update as requested on our safety plan for the 4H fair and exhibit at the Delaware County Fairgrounds. So at this point, our safety plan does comply with stage 4.5. I don't think any of us really saw half of the stage coming, but our safety precautions already align with that. We have not been able to get into contact with the Health Department for further guidance, however, so we've left multiple messages and, and realized it was a holiday weekend. So right now, we're just kind of waiting on that communication from the Health Department. It has been approved by Purdue at this point, so with the new information, just, just waiting for that. So any guidance or questions you guys have, I'm, I'm happy to answer.
Have you emailed that plan to the Health Department?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah. We emailed the plan to the Health Department, and they provided comments and feedback, which we included within the document prior to sending it to the university.
Okay. So you, then you emailed the final plan back to them?
Yes, yep.
Who'd you send that to?
We sent it to Jamie Bain.
Okay.
Yeah.
I'll, I'll make sure you get something back, okay?
Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you. Any other department head or elected official in the hallway? Okay. Everyone received the Ways and Measures Monthly Report? Okay, now we have the payment of claims of $4,311,870.96.
I'll move.
Say it.
A motion to approve the claims, and a second roll call, please.
Ms. Reagan.
Yes.
Mr. King.
Yes.
Mr. Henry.
Yes. Okay, at this time, we have a public comment. Stanley Guidell, I believe?
Yes, sir. Could you please approach the podium? State your name and address, sir, please, for the record? If I may, I'm gonna remove my mask.
Absolutely.
Thank you. I just can't get my glasses to cooperate with the mask. Commissioners, good morning. My name is Stanley Guidell. I live at 8410 North Tahoe Drive in the Country Village-Creekwood neighborhood, and I'm here today on behalf of the 14 members of our Neighborhood Association Board of Directors who have endorsed the statement that I would like to read to you this morning. I'm here once again to ask for your help in addressing the street issues that continue to plague our neighborhood. I won't recount for you in detail the poor condition of the roads in our community. We've illustrated this for you in the past. And if I'm correct, I believe most of you, if not all, have come out to our neighborhood and are personally aware of the deplorable road conditions we continue to endure in Country Village and Creekwood. Candidly, we were hopeful of seeing some paving and repair work this year, but already half the year has passed with no activity. And of course, I'm aware that there may be special circumstances in play due to COVID-19, and those circumstances may be working in opposition to accomplishing street repairs this spring. Here today to make a very specific request, one that I believe could be granted even in the context of COVID-19, and that request is the following: Would it be possible to create a plan, a written, publicly accessible, comprehensive, multi-year plan to pave and repair the streets in Country Village and Creekwood? Of the five and a half miles of roads in our community, four miles are badly in need of attention. For the future, if those four miles of roadwork could be accomplished over the next few years, our community truly would be grateful. For the present, if you could share with us a plan to address this need, that would be tremendously helpful to us. We understand that plans need contingencies and flexibility, but knowing that there is a plan in place that would do much to ease concerns in our neighborhood regarding the deplorable condition of our roads. Actually, I see a number of people here in the audience that are from our neighborhood, and if I may, I'd like to ask those who are here from Country Village and Creekwood to raise their hands in support of this plan. Thank you. In closing, I was greatly encouraged to hear that one of your members, Commissioners, has contacted the President of our Board of Directors to indicate that the creation of a paving and repair plan for our neighborhood was possible. Could you share with us today any information you might have regarding the progress on creating such a plan?
Yes, yes, sir. Understanding, uh... Jenny, could you make about, raise your hands again? Make about six more copies of this. Jenny, I have a copy here. So understanding that, you're right, COVID has created a problem for us. Before COVID, we were doing good. We, we've paved a lot of roads throughout the county for the past couple of years, and, and everything was going really well. You guys had come up here last fall, I believe, or maybe it was even the winter, and we had said that we would come out and, and try to get some work done out there in, in the addition. And all of us have been out there and driven the roads and looked, and so we know the problems that are out there. In the plan this year, you see it's North Oak Flat Road, North Santa Barbara Road, North Costa Mesa, and West Sacramento. Where's Bob? Is Bob here?
He's out there in the hallway.
Hey, Bob? So, these are, these are estimates, cost estimates, of, of, of the paving project. Hoping that our local roads and streets and our wheel tax don't take a hit, which we think they will. John, can you elaborate any on that?
We're still waiting on some estimates from the state, but we know that the MVH Fund, which is funded by gas tax, as well as local road and street, which is funded by gas tax, will take about a 30 to 40% hit at least on the numbers. We get that money on, on a monthly basis. It's already been reduced because of nobody driving in March, nobody driving in April, and very few people driving in May. So that money is starting, is trickling in as opposed to the money that usually comes in. They anticipate that that will, that could continue for, for a while.
So, so we, we hope we're able to do this. This is definitely not promises. We've all spoke with Bob. These, we feel like we can do it, as long as the money comes in. These totals, estimated totals, would be EMB paving, performing that work. The reason being is there has to be a, Bob, you may have to help me with this, there has to be a mat put down on those roads prior to paving. And so there's another company that EMB subs with that would come in and put that mat down to keep the roads together. So that's, that's kind of our, our plan.
Yeah. Robert, would you, could you come up and, for the record, talk about the J-Band, I believe they're talking about? Well, that's what we want to know.
The, the mat. Let's talk about the mat for a minute. Sir, why don't you, do you mind having a seat and letting Bob take that microphone, please?
Thank you.
Thank you.
What happens is when you pave over top of roads that are cracked, that existing crack comes through the new. So they put a mat down with adhesive and pave over it, which keeps that from reflecting through the new. Now, they are going to mill that parts of it, so that...
And we are having EMB paving do this.
We are.
You are. That's what I was told. So I would like to suggest, since I just got my copy, and I am proud to say that EMB paving with this new technology is what we need. But I would like to recommend that we let the Board of Directors sit down with you and look and see if there's some that they would like.
And, and that was, that was a discussion I had with Shannon. If you guys have a road that you would like to do ahead of something, I don't have an issue with doing that. But it all has to be done in a certain manner, because the company that puts down the mat has to have X amount of square yards before they'll even come out there. So that's why this is set up the way it is. So, you know, prior to, if you guys want to look at this in your Neighborhood Association and, and tell me, okay, we think this road probably should be done ahead of this one, then maybe we can work the schedule around to fit that in there. Thank you very much.
And, and Robert, are these kind of estimated about the same mileage or of the five miles or?
I, I don't have it estimated in mileage. It's, it's done in square yards.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you, Robert.
Okay. Thanks for putting this together. I appreciate it.
We also still need to keep up with the drainage in that area, too, because of the, the roads.
We, we have been doing some stormwater work out there as well.
Yes, sir.
And, and that's something that also needs to be kept up on. And also, another issue, which it's an issue in all residential neighborhoods, is leaves.
Yes.
Piling up on the storm drains, and, and people putting leaves on the road, and then them running down the, the road and getting into storm drains. So try, try to make a effort to mention that in your Neighborhood Association meetings, to ask people to keep their leaves and grass clippings, try to keep those off the road, don't let them pile up on there.
Yes, sir. Commissioners, I just do have one question for my own clarification. The roads that are listed here, are these for repaving, or are they for some spot repairs?
It, it sounds like they're gonna go in and, and take the machine that brings up the, you know...
Bob, these are, these are all repaved.
These, these are professionals.
These are all repaved.
Wonderful. Okay. Well, if I may, Commissioners, thank you very much. On behalf of myself and everyone here and everyone back in the neighborhood, I want to express our very sincere appreciation and thanks for the thought that's gone into this and for the effort that will take place. This has been something that, as you know, we've been concerned about, and your response is welcomed by all of us. Thank you very, very much.
I do have a question for Robert, though. Robert, please? I have a question. And I do appreciate this, Robert, and doing it right. The five years, is there any way that we could, and I do appreciate you being able to do some this year, but is there any way that we could get the company to go up and to do any kind of leveling, like a year in advance, or would that be ruining the drainage too much?
That, that's something that would...
Right. Right. And then, and Robert, what kind of timeline do you need for the Board to get back with you to start this for this year? That's what I was thinking. Okay, thank you very much.
If I may, just make one more very brief statement. We really... We really appreciate the opportunity of having some input on the order of precedence here. And so we will discuss that, and what would be our mechanism for communicating that back? Should I just get in touch with Robert directly? Perfect, okay. Thank you again, very much.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Next is Norb. Forgive me, I can't read your listings.
Understood. It's Norb Heben, 2301 West Pineview Drive. I do want to thank you. This is a pleasant surprise to, to see this. I'm attending this because I was a past president, secretary, treasurer, and 25 years ago, we approached the commissioners at that time with an effort, or an offer for a Barrett bond, which was at that time, if you're familiar with it, that's where we were going to actually take it upon ourselves. Commissioners at that time chose not to follow through and accept that. They did put together a five-year plan, which lasted one year. It wasn't written, so I do appreciate that. I do want to thank you, though. I appreciate the time that you're putting in, doing it, support of the board, the current board, in hopes that you can accomplish what I couldn't. So thank you for doing that, and thank you, guys.
You're welcome.
Mitch Isaacs?
Mitch Isaacs, 8501 North Yellowstone Drive, President of the Country Village-Creekwood Board of Directors. You know, I planned to read an article from Mike Hicks about the importance of middle-class neighborhoods, but it doesn't seem like that's necessary now. So I do want to say just thank you again. I know it's repetitive, but I don't think appreciation, I think appreciation is in good order. I know that our neighborhood has come to you often, especially in the last few years. We've come to you about sewage, we've come to you about drainage, we've come to you about roads. And that is because the people in our neighborhood believe in our community. And we believe in working through the systems of government to accomplish great things. You know, me personally, and I know I've, I've sometimes been a critic, but I've also sometimes tried to be credit, when you all have done things that I think should be done. I will tell you personally that you see me so often, because I grew up in a little town called Greensport, which you've probably never heard of, but it's smaller than Albany. It is three churches, one bar, and no stoplight. And, yeah. And I'm the son of two factory workers with GEDs. And I stand before you with two degrees, a bachelor's degree and a master's degree. And when I moved into Country Village, my father, who's not a very emotional man, almost cried. Because for our family, for me to live in a community like that was our dream. My family worked hard to get me there. And when I became the president of this community, I saw a great community of, of great people, but I also saw a community that was in need of repair. Our infrastructure is old, not only our roads, but our green spaces. And I saw a community that was once the crown jewel of Delaware County that I thought could be again. And the steps that you all have taken today with our roads and with, recently with our drainage, has been greatly appreciated, not only by myself personally, by our community directly, because we love our community, it's why we organize and agitate so often, because we see what, we see what it is and we know what it can continue to be. So my personal thanks, and also my thanks on behalf of the Neighborhood Association. So thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, next is Cameron Grubbs.
Thank you, Commissioners. Cameron Grubbs, 4400 West Peachtree. I just wanted to come up today, there were a few points to address. One is, I would like to recommend that the, that the commissioners move more towards going beyond what the state is doing with masks and COVID-19. There's a lot of back and forth on the information just being presented from the county, from the, the Health Department, and I really would like to see the, the county go more towards a mandate of the masks. It is, I think there's three, three counties already doing it, but if you look at the numbers recently, I know that Delaware County's only been putting out the, the numbers about once a week. But, but the numbers, which I know Mr. King had said that you want to go by in the, in the article, I think, what was it? Last week, we had 13 cases or 15 cases. The past two days, according to the state, we've had 13 in Delaware County. So, and if you look at the trends, that is really coming up for the state. Another thing I wanted to address was, I, I find it kind of disappointing, I do appreciate that you're not wearing the Blue Lives Matter mask, but I do just want to say that I'm still disappointed that there hasn't been anything said from the county regarding racism. We're not just talking about the murder of George Floyd or anything like that, we're talking about the systemic racism within Delaware County, and I would like to see a, a public statement from the county. I do appreciate that you're willing to hold the training for the microaggressions to, you know, because things like All Lives Matter and Blue Lives Matter are microaggressions against that, and so I do appreciate that you're willing to, to bring that in and incorporate that. The only other thing I wanted to ask was, or bring up was, that I didn't see anything from the county either on Pride Month. You know, it is important to recognize people of the LGBTQ community and to make Delaware County a welcoming place, and so I would like to see Delaware County acknowledge that and do that in the future. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, let's, no further business?
Bob, just a, just a clarification.
Okay.
Commissioners, we actually had, there were two public hearings at the start of this. One was for the transfer to eligible non-for-profit entities, one was for disposal of county-owned property, which you adopted the ordinance on. And I didn't see any comments on Facebook as to either one of those. I think it, it, just as a point of clarification, we should reopen the public hearing and see if there's any, anybody have any issues as to the, for the deed sale. We're talking about the deed sale.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion to open the public hearing up in a second. Rule call, Steve?
Mr. King.
Yes.
Ms. Rigan.
Yes.
Mr. Henry.
Yes. Is there anyone here to speak about the deed sale?
This is the, the sale of property, and I want to make sure that just the record is clear, so we have the sale coming up on July 28. There wasn't any public input. I haven't seen any comments on the Facebook Live as to the deed sale, and this is the second annual deed sale for the, for the county, so.
Okay, let's...
Make a motion to close, if we have nobody.
We have a motion to close the public hearing?
Second.
And we have a second.
Wait, wait, I think, do we have a comment on the deed sale?
Well, I was just going to say that the live feed does seem to be down, so I don't, that might be why you're not seeing any comments.
No, I'm, I'm watching it live right now.
Okay. It was, what was announced was that the live feed is having connectivity issues.
No, I'm, I'm seeing it right now, so.
But people were not able to watch it all the time. I just want to make sure everybody was away.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
So a motion to, and a second to close the public hearing. Steve, you call the roll on that?
Ms. Rigan.
Yes.
Mr. King.
Yes.
Mr. Henry.
Yes.
Yeah, thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you.
Okay.
Motion recessed.
We have a motion to recess. Do I have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to recess. Steve, can you call the roll?
Mr. King.
Yes.
Ms. Rigan.
Yes.
Mr. Henry.
Yes. Thank you, everybody. On recess.